Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker. Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was just getting that, getting that look with Bill Kicker right above my head there.
I saw his mouth move, so he's here.
All right. First item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any changes, corrections, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we are up to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. These would be the minutes of the August 18th, 2020 meeting.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to approve the minutes of the August 18th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And those meeting minutes are approved. We have one, two, three, four, five items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one, which is item two, if you're following along on the agenda, is to accept the right-of-entry agreement with Storm Master Funding X15 LLC. I guess that would be 14 LLC. At the June 18th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the applicant received site plan approval to construct a 13,000 square foot, two-story childcare center, New Creations Childcare and Learning Center LLC, to be located at 1805 Gateway Drive. The right-of-entry agreement allows the city to enter onto the property to maintain the water main system for the public safety purposes, including hydrant flushing twice per year and exercising of the gate valves. The water main system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Storm Master Funding X1V LLC for a proposed daycare facility to be located at 1805 Gateway Drive. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item three on this evening's agenda, is to approve final payment to Custom Builders Incorporated for Project 18-10 Lyons Coon Creek Park. We have some change orders for additional work, including channel dredging and embankment grading, removing trees and stumps, stump grinding in hallway, box culvert revisions, and other miscellaneous items. The actual project costs were more than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid, so we are looking to approve change orders and final payment to Custom Builders Incorporated in the amount of $105,844.75 for Project 18-10 Coon Rapids Lyons Park. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item four on this evening's agenda, is to approve a gambling, gambling premises permit for Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 at Leonard's Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The city received a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 for Leonard's Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest. This gambling premises location had previously been handled by Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association. The Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 had previously operated a premises permit at Chanicleer Pizza and Grill but was given notice recently, making Leonard's Bar and Grill the only gambling location that the organization will be operating at this time. State charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved or denied by the city council, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-72, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 at Leonard's Bar and Grill, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest. And now we have the same one, I can almost just invert the names here a little bit, but to approve a gambling premises permit for Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association at Chanicleer Pizza Grill, 11706 Crooked Lake Boulevard. The city received a lawful gambling premises permit application from the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association for Chanicleer Pizza Grill, 11706 Crooked Lake Boulevard. This gambling premises location had previously been handled by the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334. However, Chanicleer Pizza Grill gave that organization notice and now has signed a lease agreement with the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association to conduct charitable gambling at their location. The Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association currently operates at two additional locations, Scoop's Pub and Muddy Cow Bar and Grill. State charitable gambling law requires premises permits for gambling activities be approved or denied by the city council, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-73, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association at Chanicleer Pizza Grill, 11706 Crooked Lake Boulevard. And the last item on the consent agenda, which is item six on our agenda this evening, is to adopt Resolution 20-76, accepting CARES Act grant funding for election-related costs. Minnesota laws 2020, Chapter 77, authorized the use of the CARES Act funds within Minnesota, including allowing for distributing these funds to local governments for use consistent with the state and federal requirements. This is a separate pool of funds from the larger CARES Act money that the city will receive, and these funds can only be spent on elections-related expenses. Anoka County was awarded the full county share of $272,782.8, and the OSS, and this is not that secret organization from World War II, this is, this is the Office of Secretary of State, will provide these funds as a block grant to counties with the instruction that the counties work with their municipalities to determine a fair, equitable, and mutually agreeable method for allocating the funds within the county and between municipalities. Anoka County has indicated they will distribute the CARES Act funds to municipalities based on the default allocations provided by OSS. The city of Coon Rapids will receive $31,526.82 that will be used to help pay for the additional personal protective supplies like face masks and shields, plexiglass barriers, hand sanitizer, and disinfecting wipes at the polling locations. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-76, accepting CARES Act grant funding for election-related costs in the amount of $31,526.82, and that is our consent agenda. Your honor. Councilmember Wells.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by, boy, it was kind of a close one, I'm gonna give that one to Demmer. Any discussion or corrections or questions, clarifications? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved and adopted. And we are up to item seven under new business, and this is to consider planning case 20-12, consider preliminary plat and final plat for Egrid Station 10122, Egrid Boulevard, reprise design. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. What is being proposed is a, this is a, kind of a two-part application tonight. A site plan was approved by the Planning Commission for Caribou Coffee in last month's, last month's Planning Commission meeting. And the first item tonight is the preliminary and final plat. The site is about 1.3 acres in size. It was originally plotted as Outlet K of Port Riverwalk, which is just the other side of Egrid here. Since it's an outlot, it has to be plotted prior to development of a site. And you can see it fairly clearly on here is there's a 70-foot wide utility easement crossed here, and these are the boundaries of the plat here, the triangle. This is the final plat. It shows Egrid Boulevard, Coon Rapids Boulevard on the north, and the Coon Rapids Service Drive on the, so it's kind of the south, south end. The property was never officially plotted, and no park dedication was ever collected, so it's recommended that park dedication be paid as part of this plat, the amount of $5,000, which is $5,000 per acre for commercial. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the preliminary plat, and the conditions include all engineering comments be addressed, all Anoka County Highway Department comments be addressed, and park dedication fees in the amount of $5,000 be paid prior to releasing the plat. That staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat, and council approve the attached resolution.
All right. What do you have, questions, Mr. Harlecker?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion in planning case 20-12 that we approve the preliminary plat and approve Resolution 20-70 granting the final plat approval with the three stated conditions of all engineering comments must be addressed, all Anoka County Highway Department comments be addressed, and park dedication fee in the amount of $5,000 be paid prior to the release of the plat.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Now let's, item eight, consider planning case 20-13, consider use flexibility for drive-through window for a 600-square-foot coffee shop, 10122 Egrid Boulevard, reprise design. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, let me go over, kind of give you a summary of the site plan and what's being proposed out there. As you can see, this is Coon Rapids Boulevard, Egrid, and the service drive. Access into the site is off of the service drive. There's one access into and out of the site. Cars will come through. The drive-through is up here. They circle around and then come back out the same way. This here is the proposed coffee shop. It's drive-up and lock-up only. No indoor seating is proposed. It's about 600 square feet, and the drive-up window is on this side of the building. Zoning code prohibits drive-through windows because it's in the River Rapids Overlay District along Coon Rapids Boulevard and areas outside of the port. This property is zoned to office. The other side of Egrid is the Port Riverwalk, Port District. So what's being, council, that consider tonight is use flexibility to allow the drive-through component of this, this site. This is the grading plan. This large area here is the stormwater pond. Otherwise, it's a fairly flat, flat site. Here's the landscaping plan. The site is heavily landscaped. As you can see, they've got a lot of perennials and bushes here, with overstory and evergreen trees along the Boulevard, as well as shrubs and ornamental trees around the building. This is what the proposed building will look like. It's a hardy-plated lap siding with a brick base and a metal roof. It kind of has that Northwoods feel to it. This is a side that has the drive-through window. The opposite side facing Coon Rapids Boulevard has the lockup. There's also a patio at this end of the building here, in the seating area. As you drive down the Boulevard, the, the drive-through window will be screened by the landscaping and the fact that it's on the opposite side of the building from Coon Rapids Boulevard. In addition to that, the, the menu boards are all facing away from Coon Rapids Boulevard. And considering use flexibility, the criteria that we looked at for this project is that the site is small, it's got that odd shape, it's got the utility easement through here, and it's really accommodated a small building like this. Plan provides for amenities and buffers and screening. You've got the landscaping, the fact that it's on the opposite side from the road on the building, and the outdoor seating and patio area. And finally, there is a demand for vehicle-dependent retail uses along the Boulevard, and this fits that. And with that, staff is recommending approval, excuse me, council approve the use flexibility for the drive-through window. Back on, at the August Planning Commission meeting, the commission also approved design and dimensional flexibility for a number of items, including minimum building size of 2,000 square feet, two-story expression, 30% stone facade, 60% glass on the side facing Coon Rapids Boulevard, building setback from Coon Rapids Boulevard, parking setback along East River Road, and a number of parking spaces. Zoning code, the Planning Commission has authorized to approve the site plan and design and use flexibility, however, with respect to, excuse me, design and dimensional flexibility. Use flexibility requires Planning Commission recommendation and then city council approval. And with that, staff recommends, and the Planning Commission recommended, council approve use flexibility with the findings included in the staff report.
All right. Thank you.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
So a couple of things. I didn't understand between this one and the last one. The last one said it's plotted as an outlot in Port Riverwalk, and then this one said you can't have a drive-through outside of the port. So that made it sound like, the first one made it sound like it's in the port, and the second one made it sound like we only have to approve this because it's outside the port. So I don't know if that's just a clunky wording.
That's just, you're correct. It's just a funky way it was plotted. It was included in Port Riverwalk, the initial plat, even though it was outside the Port District.
Okay. So...
It's actually zoned to office.
So the first one says it's part of the port, and the second one says...
It's outside of the district.
Okay.
Part of the plat.
All right.
It's part of the Riverwalk.
Which is why we're totally okay with it, because it's essentially functioning as part of the port now that it has a building on it, really. I mean, to me, it's, it's exactly as you stated it in the findings, that it's a good use for that land that's adjacent to the port and could easily have been included in the port. And then, the only other question I had is, looking at this design, is this the design they wanted, or did they design it, were any aspects of this design changed because they thought they had to meet some special criteria? Like, would they have preferred the building be in the middle and the circulation go the other way? Because the circulation here is a little bit funny, where you come in on one side and then you have to change lanes to get into the drive-through, you know, and it looks like that's a function of keeping the drive-through pointing a certain direction. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't make their site more difficult than it had to be.
Councilmember Demmer. Now, this is the way it's always been presented, and the applicant kind of explained at the Planning Commission. They are on remote, if we have any questions of them. This would really be controlled by signage. Most of their traffic is drive-through. Very little of it is actually coming in and parking. The other sites they've done actually have fewer parking stalls than what's proposed here.
And it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't one of those situations where they wanted something, because I do like this, because I think it makes it better for the lockup anyway. So I'm, the findings make sense, I'm in favor. I just wanted to double-check.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, one kind of tangential question that I've, I've heard a couple of times. That's the corner that we have, like, the entrance to the dam park and that big sign. Can you confirm for me that there is no impact to that sign and it will stay?
At this point, the sign stayed. There is a long-term agreement between the city and Anoka County for that sign to be there. There aren't any plans at this point to remove the sign.
Okay. Thank you. And then, just a couple of other comments. To me, the little flexibility that we're looking at is reasonable. This is next to the port. It is a really small site, and the, some of the things that the Overlay District and things we're trying to do is to pull buildings up to the Boulevard, to make them walkable, to have seating, and those kinds of key elements are reflected in this, so I will be supporting.
I think this is really a nice fit down there. I've, I like the looks of the building down there. You know, you have to get used to that smaller footprint, but that's their new model, and I think it fits better here than in some of the bigger shopping areas I've seen them drop it into. And I think this is gonna get a lot of use from people going to work and for going down to use the dam and go boating and grab something on the way, and I just, I think, I like everything about it.
I do, too. I, you know, there are very few places that are right immediately on the trails that you can go to to stop in and get a snack, and this is, this is now one of them, and I'd like to see a little bit more of this, frankly, in Coon Rapids, so. Looks good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great nice amenity next to the port and everything, and I support that. I've seen him around town, and it's a nice little design. A couple of questions. One would be the design flexibility, the setback from Coon Rapids Boulevard. Can you explain what that flexibility is, what the standard is today, and what they're asking for?
Councilmember, this is, required setback is 22 feet. What they're showing on, and what was approved, is a setback of 20 feet.
Okay. So, pretty minimal in my, in my mind. And then, in terms of the...
About that much.
Yeah, about that much. Thank you. And then, in terms of the, of the drive-through flexibility, I think, again, there, that's a, that's a good, flexible, something that we can live with. I mean, the orientation of the drive-through is parallel and right next to Coon Rapids Boulevard, so it's like those cars are just basically off the road going through that drive lane, so would support this.
All right. Sounds like you've got a lot of support.
Your honor.
Have some coffee. Councilmember Demmer.
In planning case 20-13, move that the city council recommend the use flexibility to allow the drive-through based on the findings. Oh, shoot, I have to do that one, too. No, that's all I have to do, right?
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Before we vote, I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission, because this took us, what, like, five minutes? The Planning Commission hammered this around for, what, an hour? You know? So it's, it's really nice when, when you have commissions doing their job like that that really make it amenable, so. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
We're on to item nine, which is to consider Resolution 20-71, amending the capital equipment fund. We're looking to consider the following for purchase-through contract for cooperative purchasing in 2020 rather than 2021. A replacement sidewalk tractor, a John Deere tractor rental, HLA plow blade attachment for the John Deere tractor, and an HLA plow blade for the front-end loader. Mr. Hammer, do you want me to read this, or do you, anything you want to highlight from this?
Mr. Mayor, council, these are items that are contemplated in the 2021 budget. We just think it'd probably be good to get them before winter, and we can use them in 2020, 2021 instead of 2021, 2022. So, we talked about this a little bit at the budget conversation a few weeks ago. Primarily, we're looking to rent a John Deere tractor. Real low cost for us, but we have to buy the plow blade attachment for that, and we're also looking to get a similar plow blade for our own front-end loader. It articulates on the ends, it can back drag, it has a whole lot of flexibility, which is gonna help us clear our facilities as well as on our cul-de-sac route. So, we wanted to get a year in of use on this equipment, so I'm asking that we allow us to move forward with these purchases so we can use them this year, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Hammer, are we gonna recognize some savings? It looks like we're looking, we're gonna do a contract for cooperative purchasing in 2020. Is that, are we, is it some sort of a coalition of buyers, or is that just a term for something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, it is off the state contract. So there are typically annual increases, so we're probably looking to save 10% to 15% buying in 2020 versus waiting until 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Your honor. Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move adoption of Resolution 20-71, amending the 2020 capital equipment fund for the purchase of replacement sidewalk tractor with attachments, John Deere tractor rental, and two HLA plow blades, which I think we need.
Motion by, nice try, Bill. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion?
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Since today we're talking budget anyway, can somebody just sort of explain how we move money from the 2021 budget into the 2020 budget and everybody's happy about it?
Yes, Councilmember Demmer, there is a fund balance available in that capital equipment fund, so basically, we would just purchase the item in 2020, do a budget amendment, move the budget money over, and then have that excess available in 2021.
Okay. So you're gonna drop the, so we've got a budget for equipment purchase.
Yes.
That's got enough money to make the purchase. We're gonna shrink that temporarily, essentially loaning ourselves the money, and then we're gonna grow it back up to the, to the spot that it's at with the 2021 budget.
That's not really accounting terms, but yeah, essentially, I get what you're saying.
I'm not trying to use accounting terms. I'm trying to use colloquialism here. Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
I thought maybe I would have preempted Brad for having asked the question.
You did a little bit.
No, I did have kind of the same question. I was, you know, thinking if we had excess money in the fund for 2020, we could make that expenditure in 2020, and then that would affect the 2021 budget a little less, but we're still in the preliminary stages of the budget, so we can probably work that through. But I did have a couple of questions on this. Actually, this kind of took me by surprise, because we just did have the work session where this was brought up, that this was gonna be 2021 budget. Did, did something change? Did the machine break? Was there mechanical issues that all of a sudden we needed it this winter versus we were thinking we needed it next winter?
No, Councilmember Grisgoviac, this is, the sidewalk machine is a replacement. We have some bellows machines that are going on eight to 10 years old, and so last year we purchased our first MT trackless, and that's kind of the new equipment we're moving towards. So, we're just, we'll be selling one of those bellows and moving this up. So it was part of a strategic plan going forward to shift out of the equipment, meaning our replacement program. So, there's nothing wrong with the equipment now, other than it's getting the right equipment in, in time to use it for this season.
Okay. So we're gonna keep the existing unit that you mentioned in here as a replacement, and then we're gonna add this one in addition to the two that we bought last year?
No, Councilmember Grisgoviac, we, we had four. Last year, we purchased one, and we kept that one, so we maintained five, so we were able to expand and clear sidewalks a little bit faster. So this year, we'll be bringing on a sixth and getting rid of one of the others, so only maintaining five. So this is an actual replacement, one in, one out.
Okay. They're just so expensive. You know, they're almost as expensive. Okay, they're, they're just so expensive. You know, they're almost as expensive a dump truck. So we've got to make sure that the savings uh, are over the, uh, over the expenditure there. Uh, the other question that I had was on the blade for the truck. In the work session, you mentioned that we were possibly going to lease that blade to see how well it worked. Did your thinking change on that for the cul-de-sacs?
Uh, no, uh, Councilmember Griscoviac, we're actually purchasing two blades. We're going to own them both, one of which is going on our piece of equipment and another one is going to go on a rental piece of equipment, um, which could always then be used for our other loader or ultimately potentially looking to purchase a tractor. We wanted to just make sure it's going to work for us. So for a low price, we'll be able to get it, try it out, determine whether this is going to work to our satisfaction. And then maybe we can eliminate a front end loader at a later date and look to replace it with a tractor instead.
Okay, that clarifies what we talked about in the work session for me. Okay, thank you.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the motion carries. Item 10 is to consider introduction of an ordinance adopting a new state building code. Uh, the state of Minnesota has adopted newer versions of the international codes and the city must make minor changes to ordinance language in order to enforce the new mandates. Approximately every four to six, Mr. Brady, do you want me to read this or do you want to come up and read this? Or are you just here for questions?
Four thousand.
Um, okay, so approximately every four to six years, the state of Minnesota reviews and makes amendments to the international codes and then um, adopt them into law. The city must then follow suit and adopt the latest versions of the various codes. The newest versions of the codes are the result of the technical advisory groups assembled by the Department of Labor and Industry. Not every version of the 2020 codes have been adopted, leaving the older versions in place. Once the review process at the state level is complete, the final version will then need to be adopted by the city. The attached document contains all of the changes to Minnesota state building codes currently in effect. And that's what we're looking to adopt at this point. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brady while he's here?
Nope.
Uh, your honor?
Councilmember Decker?
Um, so we're just introducing today, right?
No.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Nice catch. I usually underline that.
Um, so this is, since it's just an introduction, I don't expect you to answer any of this here. It's just more of a, look, we're, we're going to adopt the state building code. I know that we're, we're going to. Whenever we do these things, I always just want to understand if there's anything about them that we should know about? Like, um, if we end up putting in something, something in, that changed in the code means it's going to be more expensive for us to build things or that any of our in-flight um, buildings will have to update and it'll make a, a substantial change? Or, you know, if there's really new opportunities, um, I know like the solar stuff has changed. Just if there's any way to give us a quick briefing on, here's the stuff that is in here that's interesting and might actually impact uh, either ongoing projects or future projects that we might want to consider. Um, don't have to answer that today.
Um, yeah, so we need to have the Workaholics and various associations group challenge some of the language in the codes. And what happened was the 2020 version of the residential energy code did not make it through. We're going to stick with the 2015. Um, cost benefit analysis um, was put together and it turns out it's the recapture on the amount of money you have to put into the new home and the time it takes to get it back are upside down. So we stuck with that code. With the exception of solar photovoltaic roofs, solar panels essentially on the roof of a house, that was lumped into the residential energy code, so that'll still go forward. Relatively minor changes to that. Um, they did end some language and basically a prescriptive rule that talks about if you're going to put them on your roof, you don't need to hire an engineer if you meet this certain criteria. The weight of the panel, the percentage 15% over what code is built into the trusses will hold that weight. They also put rules in there to allow a walking path to get to ventilation, plumbing and vent stacks, things like that. So those are relatively minor, but they needed to be done because some of these are right up to the edge of the house and it's whole, it's panels all the way across the back of the house. You can't get there, pretty dangerous situation. And the electrical code is currently under review too. That's another one of those where some of the technology and some of the things that come into play get to be very expensive, get to be problematic because the devices are too sensitive and they're tending to shut off refrigerators and freezers. People are losing food and, and some of those things. And the plumbing code is not through the process yet. Anticipate that to possibly be next year. We anticipate the electrical code maybe later this year or possibly next year.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And, and really for me, it's when Tim's building a building, do we all of a sudden have to budget 5% more money because of the fire code? Or, you know, those sort of things, I just want to make sure we understand.
Right, yeah, the commercial energy code is adopted. That hadn't changed a whole lot. Um, that stayed pretty similar too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Brady?
Yeah, just a, a point of curiosity, if I may. I, I mean, I, there's tons of stuff in here, obviously, and it takes a long time to, to digest it if you were to really do it. But the code has in it special rules that relate to fallout shelters and manufactured homes and prefabricated structures and modular buildings and things like that. One thing I continually get asked about by constituents is tiny homes. Has there been any discussion at the state building kind of code level about uh, special rules that relate to the evolving uh, market for tiny homes?
Not, not this year there hasn't been. Um, I believe two sessions ago, the tiny home bill did go through, did get passed into law. Um, it comes with some complications.
Right.
Due to setbacks, um, due to having two premises on one lot. Uh, the plumbing code will not allow you to have two sewers connected. Um, you have to have one sewer for one building, one sewer for the other building in case someone plugs the line. You're not flooding the other house without knowing it. So those complications haven't been worked out yet and I don't think that there's anyone who's gotten together to actually push that through and work some of those kinks out. Electrical service is another one that, that is one of those problems they need to work through, so.
Alright, thank you.
No, you, you mentioned tiny homes, but you're talking granny pods was, was the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they're essentially, it's an unchangeable term.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 the only, the only city I know of that did that was Apple Valley. They did have a provision in the Cobblestone Lake development where they actually platted that in, where you could put that grandma home or tiny home on that same lot. But it was specifically designed to do that, to meet all of the codes.
So that was a specific development that included the rules and things like that within the plat itself?
Deliberately built into it, you bet.
Alright, thank you.
Interesting. Alright, any other questions for Mr. Brady? If not, we will consider um, the adopting the new state building code ordinance introduced.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we're on to item 11, which is to consider resolution 20 dash 74, adopting the preliminary 2021 tax levy. Mr. Stemwell or Fran, do you want to hit the highlights on this or you want me to read your discussion points?
Sure, Mayor Cook, I'll take that on. Um, yes, as we discussed in the workshop on August 12th, um, we want to present a preliminary 2021 tax levy. Um, it has to be certified with the county on September 30th. Uh, this year, the proposed tax levy is 29,666,408 dollars, which represents a point 89, so less than 1% increase over the 2020 adopted levy. And this levy can be reduced before the December um, certification, um, but it cannot be increased. And also noted, um, we did get the um, fiscal disparity distribution and our um, tax capacity value from the county last week. And so our anticipated tax rate for 2021 will be 39.021%. Uh, the rate in 2020 was 40.198%, so a slight decrease in the tax rate. So the only thing really this year that's going to increase the um, city tax will be a, a potential increase in a property value. So our levy will basically not increase or just slightly a property tax this year in 2021.
Okay, very good. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Decker?
This is a complicated process, so I always like to just explain it a little for people at home. Um, first off, thank you very much to the city staff. A lot of us were very concerned that uh, this would be a really tough year for a lot of people. Um, and we didn't want to go and, and raise the levy um, significantly uh, in a year where people are going to have trouble. It is a very tough balancing act when you're doing a city budget because everyone wants a certain level of service and the service is provided by employees and employees should get paid for their job and they, they should get cost of living increases, which usually makes it really hard to increase by any less than about the cost of living increase of around 2%. Um, we asked the staff to get us as close to flat as they could and they managed to get under that, that 2% and, and actually very close to uh, to completely flat. Um, the increase includes the possibility of hiring some additional people to um, police and fire primarily because the cert, the call service volume um, has gone up and primarily the call service volume has gone up due to medical calls where 911 is called for medical reasons and, and our police and fire are the closest people. They get there first. Um, so it's, it's medical service being provided by city employees that has been driving the desire to um, increase uh, the staff. Um, so that's an option. If that hire does not go through, uh, or it goes through halfway through the year, then the total amount uh, is reduced. Um, but we had to put it in now because we can't raise it after today. So we put in what we think could be the highest amount. That can still go down. But I do want to make sure people understand the way your taxes are calculated. It is not just, yes, last year's taxes plus this point 89%. Your tax value is very much determined by not only the value of your own property, but by the values of all the properties in Coon Rapids. And so we could have a completely flat levy and your individual taxes could go up because the value of your house went up by more than the value of other people's houses. This has happened to me and my neighborhood several times because I live in sort of the starter home neighborhood and the starter homes went way up in value compared to most of the rest of the homes. So even in years where the taxes go up 2%, ours go up 10% and people ask me, what are you spending all that money on? And it's because someone else's actually went down. Um, so this is the average increase across the entire city. Your specific property will get, you know, calculated by a formula that the entire state of Minnesota uses and we do not control it. We set the levy and that's the average. Individual properties go up or down from there. The place to challenge that is during your assessment process. If you believe your home is being assessed by, for too much money, that's where you challenge it. That ultimately is what sets the taxes an individual pays. I like to say this early before the assessment process is done because when you come to the very end and you ask us why you're being taxed so much and we say, that has nothing to do with the budget, that's the assessment. It's super frustrating because that's not something everyone just knows. So here's where we get that out and, and uh, if you believe your house is assessed for too much, that ultimately is what's going to determine your, your tax rate. So anyway, thanks to the staff and hopefully that's useful information. Um, if anyone has any questions, they can certainly talk to me or email me or call me. I'm Wade Decker and you can find me on the webpage. And I'll point you at Fran.
So it's going at point 89, but your results may vary.
Your results may vary. And there's also the county taxes and the school district taxes. So your total taxes are one-third of us.
And the watershed district.
And the watershed, yeah.
Mr. Stemwell?
Yeah, Mayor, council, I just got other, other notes on the process. You will get your, a notice in the mail from the county that shows the estimated taxes for all the jurisdictions in November. And those come prior to when those jurisdictions actually approve their budget. And so tonight, as was mentioned, we're sitting with preliminary levy, essentially for the fact of being able to get the information out there to people of what those impacts will be. Then we'll come back in the first meeting in December, actually ask council to approve the budget. In this case, council did discuss a kind of option A and B as relates to the levy as Councilmember Decker described. And so we'll come back to the city council at the work session in November to have a conversation about how to approach that. But you have all the way up until that meeting in December to make the final decision on what the levy looks like. Um, and as was mentioned, you can go down, but you cannot go up after tonight. So that was it for me.
Excellent. Well done. Yeah, staff works really hard on this and we spent a lot of time going through it and very nice job.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I think it's also fair to point out that if you really want to have a lot of fun reading, the budget is available on the website. So you can actually, you know, get a copy and look line by line at what is the budget for the city. Um, I've actually had to look at a number of different cities and I can say our city does a fabulous job. It's well organized. It's got a lot of summary pages to it, so. Um, and there is also a budget highlight, which is kind of what, I think, three or four pages that just brings everything together. So if you are interested in the budget, please go look at the website, get the information. And we're all available for any questions that you have between now and when we would make the decision on the final budget in December.
Yeah, if nothing else, even reading just the city manager's overview of the budget provides a lot of insight as to what, what we're, what we got coming. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I would just like to acknowledge that this is a very responsible budget and I'd like to acknowledge that, you know, a lot of work with staff, but also a lot of consensus on the council themselves to say, we want to come in flat this year, but we don't want to reduce any services. So that's, that's not easy to do. And I know the staff had to do a lot of work to get us here and present this with us. So I wanted to, to thank everyone for that. And um, and, and the fact that we are making significant investments also in, in some of the infrastructure that you'll see in, in the budget. So again, not easy to do and I think everyone did a really nice job on this this year.
Here, I thought you were going to roll that right into a motion.
I will.
Councilmember Decker?
Uh, move to adopt resolution 20 dash 74, establishing the preliminary tax levy for the city of Coon Rapids for 2021.
Second.
Motion by Decker, second by Johnson. Sorry, I didn't see the word, I didn't see the year anywhere in that, in the
I know, I figured I'd better add it.
Alright, the motion by Decker, second by Johnson. Uh, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the uh, that is adopted. And we are on to open mic. Um, is anybody here to address counsel for open mic this evening? Oh, yeah, I see, I see notes coming out. Hang on, let me just, let me just cover it here quick. Um, open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids, and remarks will be limited to three minutes. You're already at the podium. State your name and address before addressing the council and we have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Kaylee Moxness. I live in Coon Rapids off of Bittersweet Street, 11724. Um, thank you for giving me the chance to speak today about an ongoing issue that my neighbors and I struggle with every day. Uh, the Riverwind Park was rebuilt, I believe, about two years ago, if I'm correct. Uh, it is a beautiful family park for pickleball, basketball courts and for families to bring their children to play at and nice walking paths in the area. I adore this park. This is why we moved right next to it last year. It's been a very difficult year due to COVID for this park. I wake up every day with garbage in my yard and so do my neighbors. I've expressed my sadness and frustration to my neighbors who feel the same way. This is the same group of young adults who come to this park every day between 4:00 PM and 10:00 PM. They trash the park and the basketball court. They'll play their music from Bluetooth speakers so loudly with disrespectful language and cuss and yell so loudly, the families in my neighborhood have expressed to me and my neighbors, they do not want to even play at said park with their children. The families around the park don't even like walking through the park itself. My own child is afraid to play at Riverwind Park anymore because her remote control car was almost stolen right in front of her last Sunday, August 30th, 2020. The police did a fantastic job handling the situation with a very upset mother. I also brought a good neighbor here with me to show how upset we are. I would like more police patrol and would appreciate the disrespect to this beautiful park to be handled more under control. I've spoken to this young group of adults with respect, asking nicely for them to clean up after themselves and take care of this park as, as it is all of ours to share. I've been called very rude names. I'd like something to be done, something to be more looked into to keeping this park in safe, beautiful, the way it should be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else to address counsel this evening? That's the first I heard about that. I mean, you always kind of, you hope that doesn't happen, but.
That's one of our signature parks. It's what we got an award for.
You go from hero to zero. Award last meeting.
And so the process?
Yeah, so, so what'll happen is the staff will look into this, and you will get a response from staff if it's appropriate, but I'm pretty sure you'll, you'll be hearing something. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other open mic. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. The first thing I'd like to do on other business is I would like to say kudos to the Coon Rapids Police Department. They have their 2019 annual report published and on the website now, and it's just a very impressive, very comprehensive look at all of the work you guys do and an understanding of the process, and it's just very well done. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geiser?
I think Mr. Frenelius is ready. So today is our first day for our businesses to apply for CARES funding. And so are you going to take us through how that's going to work?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Mayor and council, as Councilmember Geiser mentioned, yes, today is the first day that businesses within Coon Rapids can apply for our Small Business Relief Grant Program, which is being funded through the CARES Act money, the federal money that we received earlier this summer. So we have grants available to businesses ranging from $15,000 for businesses with under 20 employees to up to $30,000 to businesses that have under 100 employees. It's an online application process. Real quickly, the criteria is that it has to be a bricks and mortar location owned by a permanent resident of Minnesota. The applicant has to be in good standing with the state of Minnesota and the Department of Revenue, current on property taxes, and be able to demonstrate a financial hardship, which we know for a lot of businesses is not going to be, is not going to be an issue. So we've created the, an online process where people can fill out an applicant, actually fill out a questionnaire to find out if they're eligible, and then submit some information. We're working with the CMDC, which is the Central Minnesota Development Corporation. They're going to help us process those applications. So that application window opened today, runs through the 18th, and then we're hoping to get that money out before November 15th, which is the deadline for us to, to spend, spend those dollars. So it's an exciting program. We have $2 million that has been allocated by the council for this program. We're hoping that we'll, we're hoping that businesses will take advantage of it. I think I heard today we had 18 businesses that applied, so we want to encourage as many businesses as possible in Coon Rapids to apply. We know that they've been impacted by the pandemic, and, and this is a small way that we can help them offset those, those costs. So anyway, want to make sure that the public is aware of that.
So, so Grant? So just before I came, I got a, a message from one of the businesses in town, and they said the Coon Rapids Business Relief Grant Program is amazing, but it stinks was the word, that it includes June. We lost a ton of revenue in March, April, and May, but June was a good month. People started shopping again. Not to complain, but I don't feel it reflects our actual COVID losses, just an FYI in case there's an opportunity to pass that along. And then the only suggestion would be the ability to flex on the dates to reflect our true losses. And we are a new, growing business, so our revenue stream has been growing year over year, so it's hard to calculate, if that makes sense. And that's all I got. So if that makes any sense to you.
Okay. Well, that's good, that's good feedback for us to hear, so. All right, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Grant. All right. Other business to come before counsel? Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor Council, also mentioning, we have some good information on our city website, both about our business grant program and about the state's rent and mortgage assistance program related to COVID-19. There was $100 million of the state's CARES Act dollars that they can enter into a housing assistance program known as CHAP. And so there's an application process for that that goes through the Minnesota Housing Department's website. You can find information right on our landing page, as well as the business grant, and a number of other things related to COVID and programs and resources that are available. So I encourage folks to visit there, or certainly can call City Hall, and we'll put you in the right direction.
All right, excellent. Other business to come before counsel? Councilmember Wells?
I promised to pass this along, so I certainly will. I got a call from a gentleman that lives by the ICE Arena, and his words, the car show gets bigger, louder, with more reckless driving on side streets every time it happens, and he's extremely frustrated, says his neighbors are very frustrated, and even more frustrated that he feels we're, you know, semi-sponsoring it. So his words, I pass them along, and, and he also has concerns that this will happen again next year because obviously they organized it on their own, so there's nothing, we're not advocating for him to do it next year, but there's nothing to stop them.
Okay. And, and I think this was last, past Saturday was their official last Saturday night. I have a feeling there will be some residual carryover as we go into fall, but.
Mr. Mayor, on, on that topic, so I've been probably the, the lightning rod for a lot of the, the complaints from residents since most of the Boulevard is in Ward 4, where the, the residents' homes are. And so we're looking at doing an after-action report, kind of looking at what, how many calls did we get? How many emails? What was happening on the Boulevard? Did using the ICE Arena help, you know, and getting some business feedback of, did it help your business? Did it hurt your business? How, how is this impacting? And then looking at, what are things potentially we can do, you know, within the next year to look at managing or doing a better job at being able to react to the pros and the cons? Because there are things that are great about the crews, and then there's things that we have to deal with that really impact our residents. And so we have to look at both sides of that and look at how can we kind of thread that needle into having potentially a ability to have a good event that's not impacting to our residents. So we will be looking at that in the September timeframe here.
This was, this, this, I got a couple of my complaint, or a couple of the emails complaining about it. It was the reminder that it's, if you want to actually state a complaint, it's good to just complain and not do an insult, because that sort of gets them deleted then. But I responded anyway.
Mayor Council, on that topic, you know, my thought process is, we have a work session next week. We can touch base on it. I wasn't thinking it would be a sole item, but perhaps under other business, we just talk a little bit about the parameters for which. We want to look into that and how to approach next year, and then come back in October, or whatever the right timeframe is, to have a more robust conversation about it. As Councilmember Wells mentioned, there are certain aspects of the crews that we can't have a lot of impact on. There are others that we probably can. Certainly, it caused a lot of activity in the Boulevard, and some of that was positive, and some of that was, was negative, especially, I think, if you lived in that area. And so we're trying to find a way to assemble some of the information. Certainly, there are impacts to our police department and overtime and costs from a city standpoint to, to have that. So I, as you mentioned, I have heard that that was a final organized cruise, although I do suspect that people will just show up there this Saturday, and who knows after that, that some street reconstruction will begin sometime after Labor Day, so that may slow things down for the, for the fall, which should probably be okay, give us a little time to anticipate how to react to next year. So we can have more of that conversation next week and then kind of build from there.
Can you remind me what the construction boundaries are? Is it Hanson and Round Lake Boulevard?
Hanson to 111th.
Hanson to 111.
And it starts with Kerbin Gutter on Tuesday, September 8th, and then that's going to be roughly a couple of weeks, and then they're going to do the, the grind and put the new road in. But, Mr. Hammer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but even when they're doing all the gutter, that would still be down to a single lane, just to protect those workers. So as of Tuesday, the 8th, Coon Rapids Boulevard between 111th and Hanson, it will be one lane both directions.
All right. Other business to come before counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.